Sherri's in back?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, it being slightly past the appointed time, 6:04, I now call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 6th, 2023. Sherri, would you call a roll, please?
Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett? Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett absent and one vacancy, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Trent, if you'd lead us, please?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, Lucas?
No.
Okay. Then we have next on the agenda is the consent items, the minutes of the regular meetings of August 5th and August 16th. Any refinements to those minutes?
No.
No refinements.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherri, call roll on items one and two, please.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Public Communications, I see no one present in the chamber. Sherri, do we have anyone online with a hand raised?
No.
Very good, then we will move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. The only site involved here is 401 East Topatopa. It's been before us before and we've all seen it. Has anyone had any ex parte contacts?
None.
Nope.
Great, same here. Very good. So we'll go on to the discussion item, number three, an appeal of a director determination. Lucas?
Thank you, Chair. Instead of me going into the details of this project, the applicant yesterday had made a formal request, had made a formal request to actually, request for the item to be continued, date certain to September 20th, so it would be the second meeting this month. He's still, he had anticipated being here tonight, however, plans have changed for him. Excuse me, his plans have changed for him and he is not here, not even in the city, and not able to be on Zoom. And he would prefer to be here as the applicant and the appellant in this situation, so.
Okay, so a motion to continue this item to a date certain September 20th would be in order.
I move that we move this to September 23rd, continue it to September 23rd.
Twenty.
Twenty, sorry, twentieth.
September, yeah, September 20th.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Sherri, we now have four voting members, please call a roll.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy? Yes.
Great.
So what will happen with this item is, is basically the agenda itself will be just, this agenda item will be pushed to the 20th and all comments, because there were three public comments that were received, those comments will also be forwarded to 20th as well. And that'll be a part of the packet and it's already been loaded to the website already, so it's for viewing already.
Excellent, excellent, okay. And we'll move on to item four, Planning Commission appointment to the Committee to Approve Public Art, Kappa. Would you explain that to us, Lucas?
So, the, the Planning Commission is being asked to appoint to the Committee to Approve Public Art, which is a really kind of a subcommittee, if you will, of the Arts Commission. So what this basically entails is three members, it's a three-member group, and they review private and in some cases, public art, not murals, art, that's a different subject, murals. So what this basically means is there's, the makeup of it is one Planning Commission member, an Arts Commission member, and a committee member with arts, I'm calling it art smarts, or art knowledge essentially. So it's three members, as a part of the code and part of our process, there was somebody here that was identified and set to be a part of the Kappa, that member of this Planning Commission isn't longer here, and so now we have a vacancy.
We need a replacement, yep.
Yeah, it needs to be filled.
Okay, any question for staff? Jamie?
Do we have to fill it? Do we, could we say we're shorthanded right now? You know, we're having a hard time filling the committees that we already have, and we'd love to help you out, but we are a commission of five.
It's not a request. It's part, it's part of the duties of the Planning Commission.
Oh, it is, oh, okay, you're, you're saying that it is a requirement in the code?
Correct.
Title four, chapter 16.
Okay.
Says there's supposed to be a planning commissioner on the Kappa.
Correct.
Go ahead.
How often do they meet, or have they met in the past year?
They meet infrequently, meaning you may have one meeting in a six-month period. It's on an as-needed basis, basically.
And do they, do they get packets like we get from you each time?
There is information that's disclosed when items are brought forward for the, for the Kappa to review, yes.
Okay, and this is, this is using the public art surcharge, if you want to call it that, on, on commercial development?
On qualifying projects of over, that have a valuation of over 300,000, yes.
Okay, but it is the Committee to Approve Public Art?
Correct.
And you said, you, at least I thought I heard you imply that it applies to private art as well?
For developers, yes.
So if someone were developing a single-family residence?
No.
Of which, there's nothing under 300,000.
Well, it's exempt, single-family is exempt.
It's commercial.
Yes, it's commercial, industrial. So here, here's probably the easiest way to look at it. When it says public art, what it really means is you're reviewing a developer who's being, who's qualifying under the, the parameters of this code to provide public art for a private development. So it's, it has to be publicly available, not necessarily seen from the public, but it has to be publicly available, yes.
Okay, okay.
Just for commercial purposes, commercial developments?
Yes.
Could I jump forward into item five for just a moment to make the, to ask how often the public art jury meets?
Less than infrequent. It's only, it's only tied to murals.
Okay.
That one's only tied to murals. This one is tied specifically to public art.
I only know of one mural in town, I may be unobservant, but there is one on the end of the, what used to be the preschool or kindergarten building on the school district property. Are there others that you're aware of?
Murals, I am aware of another one that, that is at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, yes.
Oh, 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 okay. Who knew?
I'm only aware of it because they're looking at making modifications, so that's for another day, though.
Yeah, all right. So is there anyone here that would be interested in being a part of this three-member committee? Or do we want to draw straws and the short straw gets the assignment?
Well, I don't know, I, I think, can we lump this together with the, the next item, the housing piece too? Or do we have to have that as totally separate?
I think it would be nice to do separate actions.
Probably should be, it probably should be two transactions.
Unless, unless there is one willing participant for all three. That changes the dynamics quite a bit.
Well, I guess, I guess what I, because I wanted to ask a question before I say anything on this other piece. And can I ask a question on the Housing Subcommittee now? Just, it's a general question.
Uh, yeah, you can.
We're just trying to fit, I think, fit the time commitments of all commissioners into some kind of orderly structure.
Yep, duties and assignments, sure.
Yeah, so, so currently we have a Housing Subcommittee that we recommended and that the council allowed us to operate. I guess my question is, does that body, is it, is it still valid? I don't know, like?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
It, it also has a vacancy.
Yes.
Yeah, with that vacancy, it's not necessarily required to be filled.
Right.
But it's being brought forward with the intentions of it being filled.
Got it.
But it could just remain as one.
Yeah.
An example of such, Chair Quilisi had taken on Title 10.
Yes.
On his own.
That's true.
This body, well, the members of that body at that time, I don't think, yeah, at the, at that time had said, yes, you are being designated and tasked with it, with that monumental task, and here we are today, so.
Did a great job.
It's actually coming before council next.
We just can't have, yeah, per Brown Act, we can't have more than two.
Got it, okay, all right, that makes sense.
I could get a deck of cards if we had a deck of cards here somewhere, and whoever draws the low card.
Yeah.
Can we, can we start?
So do you want to hear, I, I have information in terms of who's on the Kappa currently. And that is, it's Arts Commissioner West and Arts Commissioner Chisholm. So it's two Arts Commissioners that are currently serving on Kappa. So the third would be a Planning Commissioner.
And this is, this is to decide whether or not a, a proposed design of public art by a developer is acceptable to the city?
Through the three.
Or is that, they make recommendations to the Arts Commission?
No, they make, they make decisions.
They make the decision.
Correct.
Oh.
Still requires the application and the processing.
What are, what are the first names of the?
So it's Smitty West and Nigel Chisholm.
Can we do this in reverse order? Can we start with the housing situation?
It would take a, a vote of the commission to reorganize, but I don't see an issue with that.
Want to, you want to change the agenda?
Yes.
And put item six ahead of item four?
Correct.
Well, can we have a, I guess, I just want to ask, is there anybody interested in one or the other? Jamie, is there something that you would be interested in, or Judy?
Either, either Kappa or art jury?
That kind of depends on where the housing situation goes, and that's why I wanted to reverse the order.
What are yours, what's your preference?
If, if anybody's.
You're the Housing Committee right now, and I'm the Parking Committee.
Right.
Well, in Title 10.
In Title 10.
In Title 10, well.
That puts a couple of people on the hot seat.
That's why we thought you weren't showing up today.
Does anyone object to doing item six before item four?
I don't object to that at all.
No, I don't object.
Okay, then let's do that. We'll go to item six, and then we'll come back to four and five.
All right. So this Subcommittee, I think we've already just heard
Yes.
the, the gist of it, does not require two, but if there's a second that is interested in being on this Subcommittee, then, then that could certainly be allocated at tonight's meeting.
And as we're on this discussion, what are the requirements of this Subcommittee? What are, what are they?
So it's a, it's a Housing Subcommittee. Remember, we had the conversation of whether or not it was a affordable Housing Subcommittee, and that falls within the realm of the overarching Housing Committee. So certainly you can, you can talk about housing-related issues. I think this Subcommittee at some point had, had had some sort of, I don't know if I want to call them workshops, but was a part of, of.
A forum.
A forum.
An educational for the community forum from several housing developers.
Yep.
And what, what is the vision of this moving forward, or do we know yet?
We do, we do not.
We do not?
That will be up to the committee that.
Yeah, don't, don't look to me for the vision. It's really up to this, it's up to the Subcommittee.
Well, the things, the things that we do need to stay within the bounds of what the Planning Commission does.
For sure.
And within the bounds of the general plan of the city.
Right, so.
And specifically the housing element.
So what I'm assuming is that it would, it would meet and it would come up with recommendations to submit to council?
To this body.
To this body.
To this body.
Yeah, as an example, let me just give you one fun example. At our next meeting, we're going to be talking about the housing element.
Okay.
I know I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but.
No, it's good.
So the housing element has 19 programs. Right now, it's me, I'm the one that's reviewing all 19 to ensure that we've got compliance over the next six years and providing steady updates. The Housing Committee could certainly be a wealth of, of understanding and support in that fashion, as Chair Quilisi was with Title 10. If I was, if staff was doing that on their own, it would be, who knows where that would have gone, right?
Take hours you don't have.
Right, and a lot longer, I mean, it still ended up being about four years before it got to City Council. But be that as it may, it's a fairly lengthy document, not meant to be taken lightly, and this body has reviewed it on several occasions, rightfully so. In terms of housing, housing element seems to fall right in line with what we're talking about. So, that's one piece.
Right.
It is a lot.
I will, I've.
Nineteen programs, these are not to be taken lightly. Some of them are maintenance, but a lot of them are not.
Yeah.
Some of them are pretty heavy lifts.
Some are plowing new ground, yo.
Yeah.
Well, I know that, I know we have to do these separately, but I would, I would prefer to do the, the Arts Commission, if that's applicable. But I can't do both. That makes sense.
And I'm already the Parking Committee. Would you like to be on the Housing Committee?
Tell me about the Parking Committee. No, I mean, I, I mean that seriously.
No, it.
Does it require two? Two members?
The Parking Committee has not met separately.
All right.
It did not be, before, when it had two members.
Right.
But the two members were invited to one meeting with the council's ad hoc Parking Committee. Since then, there have been no meetings of that committee either, to my knowledge.
But does it require two members?
It does not require two members, no. And, and the job would be, like for the Housing Committee, would be to think about whether or not there are issues that need to be resolved in that area and make recommendations. Analyze the situation, make recommendations to the Planning Commission.
For the Parking Committee, it's typically recommendations that are brought forward to City Council and then determine where they go from there.
Because the Parking Committee was invited to join the council's
Yep.
ad hoc Parking Committee.
And, and there is no Housing Committee on the council Subcommittee, is that correct?
Not at the moment. So.
Though that could change.
That could change.
Always.
I mean, there's, there's a workshop in the, in the works, so.
So.
Not everybody at once here.
It's going to be harder when we get back to the two art assembly.
That, that's part of the piece.
I would do those, I'll do those, if that's.
You'll take them both?
I'll take them both.
Wow, okay.
So you're saying yes to Kappa and to the public art jury?
Yeah, I'll do both of those.
To be fair, the public, I don't think, I, I haven't seen a meeting.
Unless you want to take one. I mean, it's like.
As opposed to the Housing?
I don't know how that lays out.
You were involved in the arts after all with the music festival.
Totally up to you.
But.
Yeah. I've been involved with the Arts Commission as well, so.
It's totally up to you. If you would rather do the arts, you can, you can take that.
No, I don't want to do the Arts.
And it's also true that neither the Housing Committee nor the Parking Committee has to have a second member.
All right.
But.
See, I'd like to be involved in the Parking Committee. And I, I mean, I, it's, it's an area of interest to me.
Okay.
And, you know, the, you know, the economic development issues, the, the retail issues, you know, all of that is of, of interest to me, and I've been sort of waiting for that one to come up, to volunteer for that one. So that was why I asked about it.
Now that it has a vacancy, you're volunteering to fill it?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right.
Well, I mean, again, it, you know, I think the other members may want to fill that as well.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay on the Parking. Maybe, would you go to the Housing and then he could take over Parking? I don't know if you'd want to do that, I'm just, just throwing it out there.
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I think either Committee would work better with two members.
Oh, for sure.
Trouble is, we're short one right now.
Yeah.
And we don't know when we will have a fifth Commissioner or who that will be
and what their skills will be or interests are.
Kappa and the public art jury are both two-year terms, so even when there is someone that fills the seat within two years, you'll be revisiting this, so. It's not a commitment for the next four years or for the length of your term.
Right.
Right?
Which depends, which depends on.
I'm trying to, to make you feel a little bit better about the commitments here.
Appointed you.
I think, I think I have one more year left, and I think, then my term runs out.
Yeah, mine too.
Yep.
On, on this commission.
Right.
So then, yeah, so Kappa, then we'd have to appoint someone else to that, you know, within the year.
Unless you're reappointed.
Unless I'm reappointed.
There's other scenarios.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really more interested in parking than I am in housing, but I would be willing to move to housing at least until we have a fifth Commissioner and then reserve the right to move back to parking again.
Could always bring that back to the table.
Yeah. You can be the Parking Committee.
Oh.
We'll, we'll need to inform the ci, in that case, we would need to inform the City Council that at least for the moment, you are replacing me as the designated Planning Comi, as one of the two designated Planning Commissioners on the City Council's ad hoc Parking Committee.
Now, I am, I like Parking too, I'm interested in Parking. But I, I don't know if, I mean, I, I don't want, if a new Commissioner comes on and they would rather do the Parking, that's totally fine. But if he needs help, you know, if we need two, I'd be more than happy to help him out. So we'd have two on Housing and then two on Parking, but I know he wants Parking too, so I'd be more than happy to step aside.
I'm just, I'm more interested in parking, but I can do that.
I'm feeling really lonely over here.
It's not you, it's the Housing.
Housing is a beast.
It is a beast.
The other, the other problem that I have
roped me into it.
Is that, that the, the cottages among the flowers and the Mallory bungalows, which were two of the four, now five pieces in which the Becker Group is involved, are two that I have to recuse myself on because I live too close to them. I don't know if that's, if that's an impediment to being on the Housing Committee or not.
It's only two sites for the entire city, so. But it is two sites that are.
Under contention.
To say the least.
Up for discussion.
Yes.
So.
But we're not directly talking about the Parking Committee tonight.
We're not, that's why, I don't know that we can necessarily make that shift unless we have an item on the, on the agenda. I do appreciate that we're roping that in, I hadn't thought about the Parking Committee. But to be fair, the Parking Committee, the two council members that are on that ad hoc had asked ye, both you and Starkweather, to be on it.
That's true.
So it was really kind of their choice versus.
Who were they, who were they?
Councilmember Lang and vice, or pro temp Francina.
Yeah, then we can let them appoint the next person.
I would probably leave it up to them, yeah, unless it remains at one.
So then we're just talking about Housing.
Yep.
So we're just talking about the second Housing Subcommittee member tonight?
Yes.
And if I go do that, then?
Well, how about this, since you're already doing the Parking thing, I'll do the Housing until we have another.
And the art?
Well, I don't.
I'll take the art.
You'll take the art.
Oh, okay.
Jamie likes the art.
All right, all right, so, so.
Why am I so nice? Because I'm not being nice.
If you would rather do, if you'd rather do the home, no?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I think we have a consensus here.
You're on with Housing.
That, that Commissioner Trent will at least temporarily join the Housing Subcommittee.
Okay.
And Commissioner Bennett is willing to take on both the Kappa and art jury assignments?
Yes.
Yeah, to, to be fair, the public art jury has, I have yet to see where they've met, because we, I would have been notified that we would have needed to fill that seat.
Because you're their staff liaison?
Well, they, because I'm staff to this commission, they would have said, who is our Commissioner? And I would have said, you don't have one. So, Kappa, we've, we've always been really diligent about that every two years.
I'd never heard of the art jury until, until this book showed up Friday.
Yep, it was new to me too, so.
Yeah, I, I thought it was part of what the Arts Commission did.
Yeah.
Well, it is, but it's, it's its own, it's, it's focused solely on the murals.
A joint Subcommittee.
Yep.
All right, do we need to take any votes on this, or?
For the, yeah, for each of these, just to, just to keep it clean, I, I think we should.
Okay. Then can we have a motion for an appointment to the Committee to Approve Public Art?
I move that we elect Jamie Bennett to the Kappa.
I second that.
Very good, any discussion? All right, Sherri, would you take a roll call on item four, please?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett? Bennett?
Uh, yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
I don't have to accuse myself, I'm voting for myself?
I don't think so.
Okay, and item five, an appointment of a Planning Commissioner to the Public Art Jury.
I make an emotion to appoint Jamie Bennett to the Public Art Jury.
I second that.
Very good, any discussion? All right, Sherri, let's have a roll call on item five.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
All right, then we'll go on to item six, the Housing Subcommittee. And I understand that Commissioner Trent is willing, at least in the short term, pending appointment of a new Commissioner, a new Planning Commissioner to join the Housing Subcommittee.
Yep.
Do we need, do we need a vote on that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's keep it clean.
Keep it clean.
I move that we nominate Steve, appoint Steve Quilisi to, to the Housing Committee.
John's taking it.
I mean, John.
I was like, hey, that'd be great.
Vice Chair Trent.
Friendly amendment.
I'll take that friendly amendment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John.
All good.
We appoint Commissioner Trent.
Okay, I second that motion. Very good, any discussion? Sherri, let's have a vote on item six.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Terrific. We're on to item seven, future agenda items.
Yes. So for the 20th, we've pushed the, and we've continued the item date certain to September 20th for the appeal, so we'll be hearing that, and the applicant has assured us that he will be here and present for that item, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Additionally, we have the housing element program prioritization. I'll be going through each of the 19. We've done this before, we've done this before, but now we're doing it knowing that everything is locked in now. Before it was like, well, things could change, this might get changed, wording might get changed. Wording is locked in now, so we've got a.
Do we have a letter from HCD?
I'll be providing that as well, yeah.
That, that certifies our housing element?
Yeah, it says substantially compliant, which is the same thing as certification, apparently.
Oh, okay.
So, we're locked in, and we're moving forward, and, um, and I look forward to hearing what this commission has to say about these nineteen items. Uh, the last time we had talked about this item, uh, Alex was here, uh, our assistant planner, who has now moved on, and we went through the near-term, midterm, kind of long-term items, ones that really need to be done.
Chart with.
Yeah, so I'm going to go back through that, see if it's, yeah, see if it's still valid. So you'll be seeing something similar. I think, I think that did a really good job of kind of laying out all of those programs. And we'll see if there's still validity to it, which, there wasn't any, any changes that were significant that I saw in the programs when we took it forward, so I think we'll probably end up using that same format, so you can expect that. And so October fourth, we're not showing any items, but I can tell you that there's a couple of them that are coming down the pipeline that I think are going to be ready, so don't hold your breath for a canceled meeting on the fourth. I think we're going to still have a meeting.
Okay, cool.
Fourteen forty daily, we've seen that before, yeah?
Uh, yeah, that was one of the first items that I brought forward in two thousand nineteen.
Wow, oh my gosh.
It's raring its, its head again.
Very good, okay. Any other questions for staff on future agenda items? We did hear from our city council liaison before the meeting. It turns out that she had this appearance here preempted by another six o'clock meeting tonight and said she would not be able to get back to address us, but thank you for our efforts. And, um, so how about a director's report? Anything else you want to add?
Uh, we're currently looking for a, an advanced planner. And we're trying to figure out, based on the applicants that came in, which one either qualifies or doesn't qualify. So we're in the middle of that right now, um, hoping to get that resolved, but that's, from the community development standpoint, that's really kind of the critical thing that we've got going. That'll help support the housing element and the general plan update and any other code amendments and.
The rest of Title X and.
Rest of Title X, the quote-unquote deeper dives that we've talked about at nausea on several different occasions, so.
Okay.
Uh, and that's, that's it, that's all that I have, um, at least from community development director's standpoint.
Anything from our city attorney?
Yeah, um, so, uh, this is going to be my last planning commission meeting, unfortunately. I've decided to take a, a new position, um, in the, the same field, but, uh, I will no longer, um, that means I'm no longer be working with you. So, um, everyone at Ojai has really been wonderful, um, so thank you, and, um, especially thank you for all of you who volunteer and, and, you know, really put in the time and effort. Um, it really is appreciated. Um, I've worked with other cities and I can say that, um, you guys are simply the best and the easiest to work with, and, uh, it, it means a lot and makes my job a lot easier, which is always appreciated.
Well, we have to know where you're going. Where are you going?
Uh, I'm going to another firm.
Okay, you can say. That's okay.
I'll say offline. I, I mean, I can say, but it's just not that interesting. So I don't know who exactly I'm going to be working for, but same, same area of law, because I really enjoy doing this.
Awesome, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Hope it's a big raise.
Yeah, it could be.
Doesn't have to drive so far.
Yeah.
That's what I really hope.
Yeah. Well, I want to personally thank you, because you have, you have kept us on the narrow path when, when it was necessary. It's a pretty reasonable group to, to stay on the path anyway. But beyond that, I have found that whenever I had a legal question, you had a legal answer, and it made sense to me. And that is a big help right there, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for keeping us out of trouble.
Yes, best you can.
Good luck with the new, the new job.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Drive safely, that, that long run back to wherever you are.
Is it Pasadena, is that where you have to go?
Do you have to, are you, with this new firm, will you stay in the same home location?
Yeah, uh, maybe, the, the firm is located downtown as opposed to Pasadena, but, um, hopefully I'll be serving, um, cities within LA County as well, and, um, we'll see. They're, they're threatening to send me out to the inland empire at times, but, um, closer is better, I think.
I have a feeling you'll have bigger cities that you'll be dealing with.
A little bit, I, you know, some, but, um, we'll see.
Is, is your current employer now?
They do, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's all, it's all public now.
Be dealing with less quirky cities?
Never, never, I, I think. Quirky is fun. Um, yeah, my last day is Friday, so, you know, get those questions in tomorrow, um, if you, if you have any, or, uh, you know, any concerns, and I'll. No, 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 no.
I've been saving all of them for this moment.
You know, I, my, my coworkers are, are threatening to take me out to lunch on Friday, so, uh, you know, I, I don't think, you know, they'll be.
Any, anything that comes in Friday at four fifty-nine will be forwarded to Lucas.
Yeah. You know, Matt's, Matt is getting just back from vacation, so you really don't want to, uh, you know, make him do extra work.
Okay, Sherry, is there anybody out there still that wants to talk or give signs of it?
Not that I can see, no.
Okay, well, then there being no other obvious business before the commission at six forty-one, we're adjourned.